Okay, we're going to start the meeting. This is the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing. It's Wednesday, February 2nd. It's Groundhog Day. He's our shadow. 9:30. Roll call.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Kernar. Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Commissioner McKinley.
Here.
Commissioner Sacks.
Here.
Mayor Weinroth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Here.
And Commissioner Kernar is going to be with us. He's stuck in the West Palm Beach traffic, which we have nothing to do with. And who's going to do the invocation?
I'll be Commissioner Sacks.
Commissioner Sacks, would you please do the invocation and the pledge? Everybody, please rise.
Eternal God, in these troubled times when anxiety runs high and frustration runs deep, in the face of political transitions and an economy writhing in disarray, we are grateful for reminders of your presence with us, your love for us, and your grace towards us. Teach, when we think that we do not have enough of this, that or the other, to be more grateful for what we do have than fearful about what we don't, and more appreciative of what we have left than embittered over what we have lost. Show us, O God, where we need to be more swift to bless than to belittle, more quick to love than to loathe, and in this season, more generous in our offered compassion to the forgotten and forlorn. May our lives, the answers to the very prayers that we offer, in your most holy name. Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Okay, do we have proof of publication?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
May I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? We have a six-zero to approve the motion to receive and file. Mr. Rutter, any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
I know of none. Patricia?
None.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All in favor, all opposed? Show that this has been approved, six to zero. Before we... If you're going to make comments today, please fill out a card. For the most part, it'll be three minutes. We'll allow a little extra time for counsel, for one of the parties, which we've already discussed. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of conversation today. All right, postponements, any?
None.
That's too bad.[205.48][205.48](laughter) All right. We had a very short meeting yesterday, at least before matters by the public. I think we're going to pay for it today. All right. Did we adopt the agenda yet?
We did.
We did. All right, good. All right, then let's move on. It's item 3A1.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. This is the transmittal... I'm sorry, adoption hearing, a number of items that we have in the public hearing. The first item is 3A1, the annual capital improvements element annual tables update. This item is an annual update to the five-year capital improvement tables and the capital improvements element of the comprehensive plan. These tables are updated annually to reflect the most recently adopted budget as required by the Florida statutes. This document reflects the ongoing need for public facilities that will ensure maintenance of the county's level of service standards. Staff is recommending approval, and the motion is to adopt for the board's consideration.
Okay, and this is our... We've seen this before. We've had a discussion on it. I'm not seeing anybody looking for further conversation, so I'll look for a motion to adopt the ordinance. I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Vice Mayor Weiss. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved, six to zero. Thank you. All right, 3B.
Thank you. 3B1 is the Westgate Belvedere Homes C.R.A.T.C.A. modifications. This was at the transmittal hearing. The board transmitted it November 3rd. If you'd like to have a presentation, we could certainly do that, unless there's a...
I don't think there's necessity for a presentation, looking for a motion to approve. Commissioner Bernard has made a motion to approve. Commissioner McKinley has seconded it. All in favor, all opposed? Show that is approved, six to zero. 3B2.
Thank you. The next item is a county-initiated amendment, also heard at transmittal, but we do have a lot of common cards on this, so if you'd wish for a staff presentation, we can go ahead and do that.
I think we can dispense with the presentation. I have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, seconded by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed?
Is that the Pioneer?
This is the Pioneer Road overlay.
Oh, I tried to swing right through that, huh? Didn't get that through so quickly.[351.47][351.47](laughter) That would have been very simple. Okay. I guess we need to get a little more... Let's see, we have some cards on that?
(inaudible).
You want to have some? All right, let's get a quick presentation.
Okay. Travis Goodson will provide the presentation.
I almost got that through.
It might be proper protocol to pull the motion and the second off the table for now and come back to it after presentation and public comments. Roberts rules, we should probably pull the motion and the second off the table right now until after public comment.
And so erase all that. Okay.
Mayor Weinroth, Vice Mayor Weiss, good morning, and Commissioners, good morning. Travis Goodson for the Planning Division. The item before you this morning is the county-initiated text and map series amendment for the Pioneer Road Rural Enclave Overlay. This item was before this board in November of 2021 for transmittal and is back for you to you today for final action. And as a reminder, this amendment proposes to revise the future land use element to add a new sub-objective in policies to establish the rural enclave overlay for the Pioneer Road neighborhood planning area and to update and replace the special planning areas map, LU 3.1, in order to depict the boundaries of the proposed overlay. General location of the Pioneer Road Neighborhood Plan is generally bordered by Jog Road on the east, Southern Boulevard on the north, Diagonal Florida's Turnpike on the west, and Okeechobee Park on the south and southwest. Pioneer Road Neighborhood Plan is outlined in red. Pioneer Road Neighborhood Plan was prepared by the residents of the Pioneer Road area and was received and filed by the Board of County Commissioners in 2013. Was officially added to the comprehensive plan as a recognized neighborhood planning area in 2014. This map shows that the majority of the parcels within the Pioneer Road Neighborhood Plan area have a low residential one-unit-per-acre designation, which accounts for approximately 523 of the 568 acres. This map shows that the average lot size is approximately 2.8 acres. The majority of the parcels range between 1 and 2.9 acres in size. So again, a quick background, in 2018, there was a county-initiated text amendment under ordinance 2018-031 that proposed the recognition of rural enclaves in the urban suburban tier. And at the July 2018 transmittal hearing, Pioneer Road Property Owners Association requested language through representative that in questioning... requesting the implementation of overlays. And at the 2008... October 2008 adoption hearing, the board adopted the county-initiated text amendment to recognize rural enclaves, also initiated a text amendment to establish an overlay for the Pioneer Road Neighborhood Planning Area. So as discussed in the staff report and presented, the proposed text amendment to establish the overlay for the Pioneer Road Neighborhood Plan as directed by the board in 2018 establishes the framework and policy guidance based upon recommendations enumerated within the existing neighborhood plan. It encourages low densities through an enhanced level of board approval for petitions regarding density increases, promotes the retention and preservation of native vegetation, and encourages the cultivation of agricultural uses. Staff analysis finds that the proposed overlay supports the continuation of the identified rural enclave, encourages the preservation of its character, furthers the goals, objectives, and policies of the plan, and is not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. And so the Planning Division has encouraged public participation throughout the creation of this overlay. There's been several informational... There've been a couple of informational meetings. There's been numerous emails and letters sent out to property owners, interested parties, communicating updates and meeting times. And a website was also established where it's been consistently updated to include new information, links to watch videos, links to previous agendas, links to staff reports. As discussed last time, we are in receipt of a few opposition letters to the overlay. These are outlined on this map in blue crosshatching. These property owners have expressed that they do not feel that their property exhibits a rural-like nature. So staff is recommending approval as published. The Planning Commission in October recommended approval with modifications, and that modification was to remove the policy requirement requiring at least five commissioners to approve a residential density increases within the overlay. This board transmitted, as recommended by staff, by a six-to-zero vote, November 3rd, 2021. Department of Economic Opportunity upon transmittal are recommending... have no negative comments. And so today, the motion before you is to adopt an ordinance to adopt the Rural Pioneer Road Rural Enclave Overlay. Briefly, just because there are a lot of different options, we wanted just to point out that this board does have the discretion to make any changes that you see fit. We can... You can adopt as published. You can choose not to adopt. You can adopt with modifications. Among these modifications are some of the options that have been discussed previously with this board and the Planning Commission. That's to keep the overlay as presented, but remove the policy requirement requiring a five-member vote of the BCC. It also changed the boundary based on the number... the opposition received to exclude those property owners. Visually, these options look like this. The Winners Church to exclude properties along that... the peninsula between Elaine fronting on Pioneer Road to remove all the properties that have requested opt-out, which extends to about a quarter mile west of Elaine. These are not your only options. These are options based on the opt-out map that we've created based on the opposition received. And so we're in the presentation right there, and we're here for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hickey, you mentioned that Pioneer is going to be represented. Is your attorney here?
We have no attorneys.
Okay, very good. All right. Then I guess it's time for public remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On agenda item 3B2, we have approximately 10 cards, so we'll start with Dennis Hickey to my right and your left, and then John Kern to my left and your right.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I don't want to take up too much of your time today. I think we've entered into enough communication with you over the last week or so directly, and I think it's well-known that this issue's been ongoing for not just the last three months, but for the last three years or so. The community has worked very hard to try to embrace everyone and include everyone in their comments and their concerns for the neighborhood. They've all been listed. At the last... At the last hearing, you very kindly gave us a six-zero vote in favor of the adoption of the overlay, but with some concerns, and some good concerns of certain residents that felt they were not really part of the rural setting. We've made every effort to bring together those concerned residents and the Winners Church. We held a special board meeting and invited the representative of those properties. We also invited the members that were... the residents that were immediately located around the peninsula properties, as they call themselves. We had a good meeting. We laid down some ground rules for a further discussion of other residents. We held a town hall meeting on the 22nd of January where... in an outdoor meeting, because obviously COVID prevents us from any indoor meetings, and it was a very frank and open meeting where the residents voiced their concerns, the representatives stated their position, and over a two-hour period, we started to get the building blocks of an agreement. And that agreement essentially... It's been emailed and texted to you, but essentially, the agreement calls for omitting those three properties and Winners Church from the overlay in return for the support of those parties of the overlay with a supermajority. And I just... I'm here today just to ask for your blessing and your rubber stamp of this, because there has been a terrific amount of work being done, and I think that that will also be the same song from the other parties, too. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. We appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following Mr. Kern, we will have Mr. Brian Seymour.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is John Kern. I am resident at 150 Bryanhurst Court inside of the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association. Also, for the record, I am the chairman of the zoning commission here in Palm Beach County as well. Four quick points for you guys. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your guidance, your expertise, your assistance over the past three to four years of getting this to this point, that you are the reason that we are here today, and we really want to let you know how much we thank you. Since the last meeting here in the BCC, there has been several local town hall meetings inside of the community. I've been witness to all of them, and there were many compromises made. There were lots of emotions, and in the end, there was just reason, you know, within the residents, and everyone who wanted to participate was there. Everyone who wanted to say something got a chance, and we're here today to let you know that we stand as a united front and we're, you know, ready to proceed forward. Third, this overlay is not about disallowing development. It's about asking for an additional consideration for development in the future. It's not saying you can't do something with your property. It's literally saying that because of the special area, because of the special nature and location of this parcel, that we just want to take one extra step for high-density development, not low-density, high-density. And anyone here today who wants to consider development has yet to talk about high-density. So this is not disallowing their options. It's just taking one more step in for consideration. Lastly, low-density works. It works here in Palm Beach County. If you look at any recent sales in the Pioneer Road area, the most recent house for sale is directly across the street from me at 151 Bryanhurst Court. It is a 3,200-square-foot home on one part... one acre, and it just went under contract for $2.2 million. That is $700 a square foot. Low-density works. People want it, and it was on the market for less than 60 days, and that was over the Christmas holiday. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration, and thanks for allowing us to have a sec.
Mr. Kern, would you, first of all, we want to thank you for your service on the zoning. You say everyone has been participating, and one of the residents from your community has indicated in my office that they didn't feel that they were being included, specifically the Kahn family. Can you just tell me how... what was done to include them in the conversations that led to today?
The Kahn family had the same opportunities that everyone else did. The signs are one property away from their closest parcel. If I put it on their parcel three years ago, when I put the signs in the ground as a member of the Board of Directors for the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association to let people know what was going on, there may have been a complaint. So we put it on a board member's parcel, which is closest related to their property, and if they didn't attend, it's just because they didn't want to attend, I have to imagine. They can't say they didn't see it because they sent pictures to you of the sign furthest away from their parcel, not the one closest to their parcel. So if they didn't want to participate, they just didn't come. But everyone else did. Gelsaminos, the Baronis, everyone on the parcel, members from Winners Church. Why not them? They're closer than those properties.
Thank you. Let me ask you another question. Can I ask for the slide to be put back up again, the one that had the three, the alternate configuration? One more.[1284.08][1284.08](pause) Keep going. By the way, let the record show that Commissioner Kernar did join us before the presentations began.
Thank you.
Now, there's one more, where it had a big three on it. That's the one. Okay. Mr. Kern?
Yes.
So this is being proposed as an alternative by the Kahn family to exclude them with the indication that they would accept a LR2 without any potential for increasing that. Is that something that has been discussed by you, by your organization, by your group?
By the Pioneer Road Neighborhood? It has been discussed, but the problem with number three there is there's no less than six parcels that are members of the Pioneer Road Neighborhood that do want the overlay and protection and everything else. So by bulking Mr. Kahn's properties in with everything to the east of him in this description here, then you're including those members who truly do want to be a part of this and who have been vast advocates for it, like, you know, Mr. Fort and Richard Blair and many others.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate for your clarifications.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll continue now with the request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move now to Mr. Brian Seymour, and then to Richard Carton to my left and your right.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Members of the Commission, Brian Seymour Gunster. When we were here last, I said please remove the Winners Church. You all had said you'd look at that. What I really want to do is thank Mr. Hickey and the members of the PRPOA. We had a very long, cold, rainy meeting on a Saturday in his driveway, and like most things, not everybody agrees on everything. But it was a very, very useful discussion. Also, Mr. Kern was very gracious, and there was a whole lot of back and forth, and we did agree, as Mr. Hickey said. One of the things that I promised him that I would say to you all is not only do we want to be out, and we appreciate being pulled out, is that the church property that we're looking at here is not looking to access Pioneer or Elaine. So any... There was a... There's an existing approval. They had initially asked to access Pioneer. It was not granted. So there is no access to Pioneer. There is no access to Elaine at this point, and we're not looking to change that, that we have the access to Jog. One of the key issues that we discussed last time is that distinction between the properties, and I know the Gelsaminos had this as well, because they also have those three parcels right... well, not them, but them and their neighbors right to Jog, that that change of, you know, six-lane highway into the Pioneer Enclave gives us that opportunity, but we also recognize that then accessing Pioneer or Elaine could change that. So any plans we have, we'll contemplate that. I also promise that any redevelopment plans for the church parcel will, before you ever see them, will certainly go and we'll talk to Mr. Hickey and the PRPOA. So we appreciate their working with us on this and recognizing that difference, and, you know, everything still has to come to y'all, but we do support this with the church parcel being taken out, as otherwise written. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next two speakers, I apologize, Richard Carton and Christina Gray do not wish to speak, but they both have clicked that they support the project. There's no other comments contained in the public comment card. So we'll move now to Virginia... Virginia Hansen, who does not wish to speak but supports the item. Then Steve Hansen, who does not wish to speak but wants to thank this commission's support since 2013 and to date. Our next public speaker will be Anne Marie Leguru, and then Joy Astoff.
Good morning. My name is Anne Marie Legonic. My husband and I have lived at 6930 Wilson Road for the past six and a half years. Having spent 21 years living in the Sun Valley Development of Boynton, we specifically sought out this low-density rural lifestyle in preparation for our retirement. We are fortunate to have been able to retire a year ago. When we made the decision to purchase this property, we did so with eyes wide open, carefully considering all the pros and cons. On the positive side, it is an extraordinarily convenient location. The neighborhood is quiet and peaceful. The houses are not on top of each other. The wildlife is abundant. The farm animals are fun and amusing to watch, and the one-acre property we ended up purchasing is stunningly beautiful. On the negative side, it can be quite noisy here with car, truck, motorcycle traffic. Our impact is mainly from southern. The first responders, police, fire, we hear quite often, airplanes, helicopters, and we even hear some light industrial noises. In the end, we decided that the pros far outweighed the cons, so we purchased this property and have spent the last six and a half years transforming it into the relaxing retreat we call home. The place we've dreamed... always dreamed about growing old with our grown children and grandchild still residing in Palm Beach County. We've planted fruit trees, a vegetable garden, and an enormous amount of Florida native vegetation. At some point, I even aspire to become a backyard beekeeper. I have captured pictures of raccoons, opossums, armadillos, coyotes on my wildlife camera. We've seen rabbits, turtles, and tortoises. The birds of prey are amazing, osprey, red-tailed hawk, kestrels, kites, and owls. Our favorite pastime is to watch all the birds from our back patio, blue jays, cardinals, woodpeckers, hummingbirds, painted bundings, brown thrashers, gray catbirds, and more. I'm humbly requesting you, the Board of County Commissioners, to approve adoption of the compromised Pioneer Road Enclave Overlay with supermajority and with the exclusion of the three properties closest to Jog. Most of the people living in our neighborhood prefer to stay just the way it is, rural and low-density. We have fought many battles over these last few years and have fortunately won. We're tired of fighting. We want to put an end to this war and go on living the lives in the manner we sought when we moved here. Right now, this overlay is the only option on the table that attempts to protect us from high-density development and preserve the rural character that we love. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joy. My apologies. Thank you, Anne Marie. Following Joy Astoff, we're going to have Colleen Gelsaminos.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Joy Ostafi. I've been here so many times, I feel like I know you guys personally. My husband and I have lived at 320 Sand Run Road in West Palm Beach since 1995. I am here today in support of the Pioneer Road Rural Enclave Overlay as the PRPOA has presented to you this morning. I appreciate the initiative by the BCC, and I'm thanking you for your past support in helping us maintain the low residential density currently found in our area. While I would prefer that the overlay included all the parcels that were in the original plan, I do understand that compromise is sometimes needed to achieve a greater goal. I appreciate all the work that our PRPOA did to reach an agreement that seems to be workable and that recognizes the challenges that our neighbors at the northern and southern corners of Jog and Pioneer Road face every day. I want to add that I was impressed, and I know you mentioned, you asked about this, Commissioner Weinroth, the outreach conducted to get everything arranged. I've had to be out of town. My mother broker hip. I haven't been around a lot, but yet somehow I found out about all the meetings and was able to attend a lot of them. There were a ton of emails that went out. You could have signed up to be on the PRPOA's mailing list a long time ago. There were Facebook posts. I'm not even on Facebook and I knew about the Facebook posts. There are two large signs posted, and the one at Steve Hansen's, which is just above the Khan's property, had a giant flashing light on it. The minute I got off the airplane and came home, I'm driving up Jog and I'm thinking, what the heck is our giant flashing light there for? It was the sign. And you could, you had to be blind to not see it, and I do have vision problems. The Pioneer Road Rural Enclave Overlay will help our neighborhood in many ways. Our traffic situation is already bad enough and it will get worse with high-density development. I don't think anybody in our neighborhood is opposed to development as a whole, but we do think one house per acre fits our community. Our biggest concern is that we need to hold the line somewhere. If we allow creepage, as one of our commissioners mentioned previously, to keep going back Pioneer Road, we're just going to become another conglomeration of crowded neighborhoods. We can forget having anything that we have right now will look like every other part of this county. The overlay will prevent the destruction of one of the last remaining rural areas in eastern Palm Beach County. One of the reasons my husband and I chose the Pioneer Road area was because we love to be in the country but be close to the amenities of Palm Beach County. And we have a garden. We see all the same animals that everybody else does. It's a fabulous place to live. So please approve the rural enclave as it was presented to you. We, we just want to keep our little piece of paradise intact and we really appreciate your help and support. So many of you have been really great to us. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your remarks.
Thank you, Joy. And in addition to your comments, Joy and I share that we might be the last two people not on Facebook. Colleen Gelsamino and then Barbara Reed.
Good morning. I'm Colleen Gelsamino and I live at 6517 Pioneer Road, the second home west of Jog Road. Our peninsula of six properties east of Elaine Road came before you in November to request exclusion from the Pioneer Road Rural Overlay. At that time, the commission encouraged our two groups to try to work together to come to a resolution of our differences. We had a productive meeting with the PRPOA and have reached a compromise that we feel is acceptable to both parties. The overlay for our part would be amended to exclude the three properties west of Jog Road, 6501, 6517, and 6529. In return, we will be supportive of their overlay with the supermajority requirement. We are hopeful the commission will recognize our efforts to work together as a community and approve a boundary change excluding our three properties from the overlay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Barbara Reed, we'll have Brett Gelsamino.
Good morning. I am Barbara Reed, 7439 Pioneer Road. Again, I've been here so many times, I also feel like I know all of you personally. Thank you once again for your time. Usually I come with a prepared statement, but I'm in agriculture. I've had a very rough week. And really just want to add to what Joy and everybody else from our association has said. We have worked hard with our community. We have a 500-acre community and almost everybody in it wants this overlay for the past seven years when we started the Pioneer Road plan. We do get emails regularly, not only from our association, but from you. When there's, you know, links, meetings, everything's been public. So I just want to ask your support once again to go ahead and adopt this finally as an overlay and continue the LR1 density and adopt this with the supermajority to keep our neighborhood the way it is. Thank you again.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. Following Mr. Gelsamino, we'll have Mr. Benjamin Crosby.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I had the pleasure of meeting with Brett Gelsamino, I'm sorry, on behalf of the peninsula that's referenced as the six properties on the north side of Pioneer and immediately west of Jog. As you guys know, we've had a extensive dialogue on this subject ranging from opposition to now compromise, as some others have already alluded to. I have a small exhibit, I think, just shelling on the map. That's the base application that was submitted. And the next slide is a revised, keep going, please. One more. There you go. Slide four. Could you get back one? There you go. Is the proposal that's been submitted and agreed to by the affected parties that are the church, the peninsula property owners, and the PRPOA. And it doesn't include everything that either party wanted. I think that's the definition of compromise. But it does, I feel, appropriately address the, you know, major concerns of the affected stakeholders and would advocate for your support and the adoption of an overlay with the amended boundaries and the prescribed other conditions that, you know, exclude additional access to Pioneer or Elaine and, you know, the other conditions that were outlined in the submittal to you. So thank you for your day.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I very much appreciate the way that you, Mr. Brett Gelsamino, have advocated for what I would call the opposition perspective. I know that you're not advocating for everybody on that side. You have your own interests and your own land, but I do very much appreciate the manner and professionalism in which you've dealt with the Board of County Commissioners and advocated your positions. It's made the process easier for myself. I'm sure other members of this board would agree with that, and you're to be commended for the manner in which you've handled this very complicated and very passionate issue. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it and thank you for your support in encouraging the compromise by, by all stakeholders. So thank you.
Following Mr. Benjamin Crosby, we'll have Ms. Kamina Khan.
For the record, I'm Benjamin Crosby. I'm here representing Palm Beach Farms Rural Preservation Committee. I was here before you, representing the organization on November 3rd, 90 days ago, and we spoke on the legal issues. If you'll recall, we raised issue about the legal sufficiency of the proposed language for this rural overlay. After my presentation, Commissioner Weiss asked the board attorney, is that true? Does, or is it false? What is the, what is the county attorney's office position on the legal sufficiency of the language? We did not get a yes from the county attorney. We did not get a no from the county attorney regarding legal sufficiency. The answer we received from the county attorney on that question was totally non-definitive. I think this is a critical, critical moment to understand that, again, the language hasn't changed. The only thing we've done now is, is to add language to remove property owners from a boundary that was adopted on October 31st, 2018. Florida administrative rules and Florida law states that these property owners that have, were in that boundary had 30 days after the adoption of ordinance 2018-031, and they had until December 1st, 2018 to take action to remove themselves. Any action today to remove these property owners prejudices those other property owners in this neighborhood that were led to believe this rural boundary overlay for the Pioneer Road community included the boundary that was established under law of Palm Beach County in 2018. So we've got two serious legal issues before the county commission, and I think first question is the county commission needs to ask the county attorney, is in fact this language legally sufficient to support the ordinance? And if you, that's our position, I think we're facing some serious legal concerns here on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Following Kamina Khan, we will have Jennifer Khan, and that appears to be the last card submitted on agenda item 3B2, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioners, if I may, I had asked to submit a, have a statement by my parents read at the end of the public comments, but they were, I was told that that wouldn't be the case, and they told me to ask if I could just read their statement prior to reading my statement, separate from my own. That's okay?
Start the clock. Let me start the clock. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. This is on behalf of my parents, Owen and Baby Khan, otherwise known as Abdul and Kudratun Khan. Good day, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor. In all the many years that we've owned our properties, we never imagined that we would have to defend our property rights against the Pioneer Road Property Owners Association. It seems that without any discussions with us ever, they would like to dictate what we can and cannot do with our 50 acres of property. Some have blatantly expressed their thoughts at these hearings and in their letters to the staff and commissioners. We've respectfully chosen to ignore their denigrating comments about our family. The PRPOA has given, was given the privilege to form and to subsequently request this overlay. We are requesting equal privilege to express our opposition to the overlay. We would like to be excluded from the overlay. Our five parcels are within the easternmost corridor of Pioneer Road and can easily be carved out. If that is not possible, our daughter will present our request for a compromise, namely the language, the allowance for language acknowledging that the current BCC has contemplated that a future land use designation of LR2 with no additional incentives, meaning a maximum of two units per acre, is very reasonable. We are asking that you arrive to a fair and thoughtful conclusion and that you could, that could be helpful to us in the future, should we decide to go that route. We are hoping for a reasonable decision that will please everyone. And they would like to also add that Mr. Hickey mentioned earlier that every effort was made to invite the owners that are opposed to the overlay. That was clearly not the case in the case of my family. And also, they would like to mention that they are not in support of the supermajority aspect of this overlay and would like that to be considered to be removed. And that is their statement on behalf of the Owen Ranch.
You have another minute to finish up.
That's theirs. Can I start?
We're gonna, we're gonna hold you to one more minute for yourself.
Oh, that's not what I was told. Okay. The average lot size here is 2.8 acres versus our 50 acres. It's not a one-size-fits-all situation. It could potentially limit our use down the road. We have embraced the rural aesthetic. We were never asked to be part of the POA or to be included in the neighborhood plan. We have been continually shut out by the POA over the years. We were definitely not part of this overlay conversation. It was mentioned that there were several town hall meetings. We were not invited. There was reference to the signs. The signage is past our property. We would not see it unless we went past it. It makes sense to have such a sign if you're going to have a sign at the beginning of Jog and Pioneer Road. We are the largest property owners representing 50 acres out of the 568. Why would we not be invited to have a voice? More importantly, they've reached a compromise. Why, if that's the case, and it has been presented, why were we not given the same opportunity to explain our position and reach a compromise? They do post signs that say, stop high-density, say no to high-density. They have that posted right across from our property. They're targeting our family. They're blatantly dictating what we can do. We've taken the high road throughout this process. If the overlay is adopted, it will serve as a guideline for the potential future of our properties. We are respectfully asking to be included. If we must be included, we would like it acknowledged that the overlay that, in the overlay, that the Florida future land use designation of LR2 with no additional incentives, maximum two per acre, is fair and reasonable if we decide to go that route.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you up there, but Commissioner McKinley has a question and perhaps give you some more time.
Thank you.
No, I've, I've heard Ms. Khan's presentation before and under, I, I know what she's asking, but Ms. Khan, you, you, you've spoken before us numerous times about not being invited to have a seat at the table. Have you ever gone to a property owners association meeting and been denied entry? Or did you apply to be part of it and were denied and rejected?
No, we were never asked to be in the POA when it started in 2013. I think we were the target of it back then. No, we never asked. However, anytime that we come into these meetings and so forth, it doesn't seem like my family is very well-received, quite honestly. If they really wanted us to be there and they were willing to have the conversation with Winters Church and those in the peninsula, as they're calling it, why wouldn't they reach out to us? I feel like we are being unfairly targeted and, you know, it's not just now, it's been going on since, you know, 2013. And my family has taken the high road and we've said that, you know. A lot of things that are unkind and unpresumptuous about my father have been said about what he has the right to do or not do with his properties. It's about, you know, let's be fair. Let's be fair. You know, I don't understand where this animosity towards my family is coming from. And it does feel like that. And perhaps where you all are sitting, maybe it doesn't feel like that. But I was speaking passionately because I know what it has done to my family as far as how it's affected us. And if you're not being well-received by an organization, it's a difficult thing to try to, you know, push to be heard because you're gonna, it's gonna fall on deaf ears with them.
Well, Ms. Khan, there's plenty of organizations where I'm probably not well-received, but I show up anyway. I mean, this, you have known about this property association for almost nine years then, if it started in 2013.
Honestly, we didn't, not to interrupt you, but we didn't know it was still in existence all these years. I, I know way back it was formed, but it's not something that we've ever...
But we've been having these conversations before the Board of County Commissioners and referencing the Property Owners Association. They've come before us and they've spoken in public meetings. I mean, it's no secret that it exists. And so I just want to be very clear that you have not actively engaged involvement with the association. It's not the association that has rejected or declined your involvement.
Well, the association has also not reached out. I respect what you're saying, but it does go both ways. And I think the reason that they have not reached out is obviously because we do represent, you know, the most, 50 of the 568 acres within this neighborhood plan. So I think, you know, quite frankly, they're more concerned about us in terms of future development. And I do want to make the point that, you know, what we are seeking, we, you know, we've embraced the rural lifestyle. That's what this is about. They can't say that we have not. We've embraced it in many cases, more so than many of the people that are speaking in favor of the overlay. So, so we get that, but, you know, it's not fair for them to try to just, to basically just not have us in the conversation. And I understand what you're saying, but it does go both ways. There's gotta be receptiveness in both directions, and I, I recognize what you're saying, but I think we're targeted because they're concerned about potential development. And I do want to say, we are not at contract with any, any entity for any part of our property. So that is not something that is ongoing, and I think that's the concern. So they figure that if they just leave us out of the equation, no. That's okay. This is my dad.
I know. I would not be able to tell my father no either.
But, but anyway, so that is, that is, that's our feeling.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Mr. Khan, you do have a card in, so after your order, if you wish to speak, we'll allow you to speak. Mr. Vice Mayor Weiss has a question for you.
Yes. I just want to go back to the reason why in 2013 this all began. And I, I believe my understanding from the Neighborhood Association was, and I'm looking at a newspaper article from that period of time, that there was apparently an agreement to sell that 50 acres to put 160 single-family homes on those 50 acres. Are you aware of that?
There, there was a deal. I don't remember the exact number, but what I can, what I can say to you is that, that obviously didn't happen. And you're talking eight years ago.
But there was an attempt to do so.
There was an attempt, but that is why...
But that's, but that is where, that was the origination of the Neighborhood Association forming back in 2013 as miners.
That is correct. That is what I meant when I said that we were the reason for it being, and, and I think...
I'm okay. I just wanted to make sure that the article quoted correctly, and I just wanted to get it on the record.
I'm not sure of the exact number, quite honestly, but correct.
I'm just saying this is what is in the article.
So, but, but I do want to make it clear at this point that that was then, this is now. We're in a situation, we weren't having all of this back then. And, you know, based on all of this that's going on, that's why we do recognize that there is a need for compromise. That's why we're suggesting that if we can't be excluded, we're willing to accept an, we know you can't do that.
That's not, that's not in front of us today.
Right. But we're making it clear that we're not looking for high-density down the road.
You're welcome to bring in application in front of this board, in front of the county for whatever you'd like to do, LR2, LR whatever, and that, that is available to you and your family.
I do recognize that.
All right. I'm finished. Thanks.
Commissioner Sacks, you recognized?
Thank you, Mayor. And we've had numerous discussions, and I'm sure you've had them with other commissioners. Emotions aside, what is it specifically? Emotions aside, what is it specifically that you want to have done with your 50 acres?
At present, my parents are living on this property. So at present, nothing. What we're looking for is the down-the-road picture, because this is the bigger picture here is really what it is. We want to have the ability. We recognize that we have to go through the normal processes and applications, should that become something we want to do down the road. But having this overlay in place is going, it's gonna be like a cloud hanging over the properties. And that's what we feel is a little unfair in that, and we want to make it clear that what we would be looking for, to answer your question, down the road, is nothing of high density. What we would be, what we would be looking for is an LR2 designation. We're willing to say, put it in there somehow, take out the incentives. So we're looking at a maximum of two per acre with no, no additional beyond that. I think that's very fair. I think it's still in keeping with this community and the aesthetic of the community, which we certainly appreciate. So, yeah, I want to be clear. The Khan family is not looking for high density down the road. That is not it. An LR2 is still low density. An LR2 with no incentives is even less density than an LR1, LR2.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Okay, that's all the questions we have. We're gonna go on to the next card.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last, the next card and final card is Jennifer Khan. If for some reason I missed a card on agenda, item 3B2, please let member county staff know.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Khan. I am the daughter-in-law of Owen and baby Khan. I've been a part of the Khan family since 1995. I've watched my father-in-law pour his heart and soul into working the Owen Ranch from the wee hours of the morning before the sunlight, all the way into the evening past dark for close to 30 years. He took his property and created his own vision. Then with the birth of his grandchildren, his vision morphed into creating a legacy for them and their family's future children. We agree on keeping the unique aesthetics of Pioneer Road, but this can be accomplished in many different ways. From the development of the POA to this overlay, I don't understand how this whole process has gotten to this point when there's been blatant disregard to and the freezing out of the largest property owner within this unique area. How is it that a property owner inside the lines of Pioneer Road Property Owners Association, who has had nothing to do with the creation of the association, and has never been involved with the association since its beginning and the creation of this overlay, has been utterly excluded from any and all communications regarding the development of an overlay that would permanently change the future use and ability of his family's property? I keep hearing that our property rights aren't being hindered, but for the Khan family, it seems that there's been more than just our property rights that have been hindered through these processes. I hope the board sees the bigger picture of not only how this overlay came into existence and gotten this far, but how it has already been able to diminish the rights of the largest property owner within the proposed overlay and others who don't agree to it based on how it will dictate the future of their property. As far as the posting of a sign for the recent meeting, how does posting a sign well past the only entrance and exit of our property count as being notified? How can anyone be involved if you're expected to drive past your property and it's the only way in or out to see that there was an opportunity? If this overlay is to be approved, I certainly hope the board will give great consideration for the property owners like us who are wanting complete exclusion of the overlay. There are many ways to keep Pioneer Road rural, just like the POA says they want, not just this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, a couple things. I would like to, first off, I want to acknowledge to the neighborhood, the Pioneer Road Neighborhood Association, to the people that participated in the meetings and in looking to create a compromise. This board did give direction to the neighborhood to reach out and to have discussions and be open to trying to work out their differences. And based on the information I received, they fulfilled that responsibility that the board asked them to do and took the time and the effort for a number of meetings to discuss the issues and how they might be resolved and try to understand this, the nature of, of the overlay and how it impacted everybody. I, this goes back, this whole process goes back long before I was on this board and I think even, even Commissioner McKinley. You were here? Oh, okay. Well, but it goes back, in 2016, they created a neighborhood plan to identify the important facets of this area in our county. And, you know, we don't have an area like this that I'm aware of, of this size, where we have these rural properties on the eastern side of our county. And years ago, there was a plan to change that. And eventually, building happened around them and we became more intelligent, I don't want to say intelligent, that's not the right word, but we became, we became, we began to appreciate having the diversity of lifestyles. And, and so staff took a different tack on this prop, on this area years ago to understand that this was being left, had been, had been remains in our county. And it's, it's an area that we have very little left like it. And I think it's imperative today to just acknowledge that it exists and that, yeah, there's a little more oversight. If we're gonna make changes and redevelop in that area, that the board take just a little extra step to say, yeah, we understand that things do change and, you know, maybe it is important to change. But today, we're saying we want to take just a little extra protection for this area. By adopting an overlay would not preclude anybody from coming in at any time and asking for a change of density on their property. And I would, I know the folks that are on this board today, and I would expect those in the future would give dual, give consideration to that. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the overlay and amend it to wholly exclude 6501, 6517, 6529 Pioneer Road, as well as the Winters Church property, that such adoption to include the provision of the supermajority for the revised plan area and to extend the variances that were noted in the Winters Church development language to specifically prohibit access by the Winters Church property, the Pioneer Road, Annie Lane Road, and ask the county if we might be able to put a marker entering the rural enclave type sign that would be designed and installed in collaboration with the neighborhood and county stakeholders.
Does the clerk have that motion? Okay. Commissioner Kernar, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait a minute, I'm waiting for a second. I'm sorry. I have a second by Commissioner Bernard. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I join Commissioner Weiss in supporting the motion. I want to just briefly thank the residents and members of Pioneer Road Property Owners Association, both for your advocacy to protect your interests in what I presume to be a large majority of homesteaded properties that is a neighborhood and a way of life for many people who worked diligently to obtain that dream. And of course, to Mr. Gelsamino again for working with the PRPOA to find a compromise and for the Properties Owners Association for having an open mind and open heart to find a compromise that is effective and workable for the majority of the members of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Banks, you want to be recognized?
Yes, there's, one of the provisions in there, one of the provisions in the motion seems to be regarding variances, which are really not before this board. And that would be if, if there was development coming in the future, that could be, you know, the board could offer their direction that they think the variances would be extended. But really, the variances are just purview of the zoning commission and they're done by, you know, in a quasi judicial process and the board doesn't have the authority to, to do that, number three.
Okay. I will, I, I withdraw, under advice of counsel, I will withdraw that from my motion.
Commissioner Bernard, you're fine? Okay. So we still have a motion by Vice Mayor Weiss, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, and I'll trust the clerk has made the necessary change. Okay. Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I'd like to commend Commissioner, Vice, Vice Mayor Weiss. I think that this is important to have this diversity. And also, I'd like to commend the, the landowners in this area. They came up very respectfully, certainly to my office, I'm certain to other offices as well, and were well-prepared and very reasonable in their requests to have this overlay. I think this was handled very properly by the landowners. It seems like it's been going on for a while, and I'm very pleased now to, to take care of the situation and close that door. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Moreno, you're recognized.
Thank you. While it may sound like a silly point, asking the county to provide for a marker sign, we have other communities that would like signs and can't get them, so I'm not sure this is something we should be responsible for. I would suggest that the Property Owners Association work with the county, especially since there's permitting and right-of-way and all that kind of stuff. So I would ask that actually we remove number four.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor, would you entertain that or would you?
Yes. Yes, I would entertain that.
Thank you.
Okay. Show that the motion has been amended and that it's still seconded by Commissioner Bernard. All right. There's no further lights. I'm gonna make a brief comment. It looks like this is going to pass. I'm not gonna be able to vote for it, but it's because, again, I understand that the Khan family should have understood this was going on, whether they availed themselves of the meetings or not. I have a problem with interfering with their property rights in this fashion. I understand the enclave. I understand wanting to protect this, but I think that there could have been a way to do this and still meet the Khans halfway. That being said, I think that the majority of this board is going to go ahead and approve this motion. And so I'm gonna ask for a roll call on the motion and we'll go in reverse order, District Seven first.
Mayor, I have a roll call for...
Oh, okay. Go for it.
In an order on a sheet.
You do your roll call and I won't interfere.
I need to call it in this order, or at least on the sheet. Commissioner Bernard?
Wow, yes.
You still came at first.
Commissioner Kernar?
Yes.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Repeat that, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
No. Show that has been approved by a six-to-one vote. We thank you, everybody, again, for presenting this in a very cordial and intelligent fashion. And we thank you, everybody. We'll take a two-minute, a five-minute recess just to give everybody a moment to stretch their legs. Thank you.
[inaudible][1420.87]
The room to please quiet down. Let's have order in the room, please. Conversations, you can take them outside. Okay, we're ready to move on. Let's go to item 3C1, Las Farms Landscape.
All right, this is a privately initiated item, and so the agent can make the presentation first.
Very good, all right.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Lauren McClellan with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I have a presentation if you would like one. I leave it up to you.
Let's do a modified presentation.
Like a modified short presentation, sure. Okay, so the item before you today is the adoption for the Las Farms Large-Scale Amendment. As you probably recall, this site is 6.95 acres, located on the west side of State Road 7, north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. So, when we were before you back in November for the transmittal of this, there was discussion about what is going to be located on this property. And since that time, the property owners do now have the property under contract from Dixie Landscaping. They are currently located in the Heritage Farms, and they are relocating out of Heritage Farms, from that little back road now to be fronting on State Road 7 on the subject property. We have a rezoning currently in process to rezone the property to light industrial, and you will probably see that probably in April. We still agree with the conditions of approval. These are the same conditions that were adopted for the Sunflower Nursery, also on the west side of State Road 7, south of Atlantic. The Planning Commission recommended approval. The board transmitted this back in November. Like I said, you'll see the rezoning application probably in April, and we are requesting approval of this amendment.
Very good, thank you.
If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't see anybody racing to their buttons. Okay, we have a number of cards. I think I counted at least ten there, so-
Mayor, we also have a staff presentation if you wish.
I would love to have the staff's precision on this.
Good morning. Scott Strunen with the Planning Division. Site is located in the Agricultural Reserve Tier, as presented by Ms. McClellan. The 6.95 acre Las Farms site is located on the west side of State Road 7, approximately a half-mile north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. The request is for a future land use amendment from Agricultural Reserve to industrial with underlying Agricultural Reserve. A rezoning application was submitted by the applicant after the transmittal hearing to change zoning from AGR to light industrial for a landscape service use. Here's the arrow with the subject site outlined in red. To the north is a feed store, and to the northeast is the Equus PUD. Directly east is the Faith Farm Ministries and the Baptist Bethesda Hospital West. Homridge Nursery, which received Atlas Pete Soil, tripping welching facilities located to the south, and further south is the Homridge Nursery, which received a CL IND land use amendment in 2016. Parcels to the west are various preserve areas for the AGR PUD. The Agricultural Reserve Tier policies have been established to limit non-residential development in the tier. For commercial, this is accomplished through limiting the amount of commercial square footage and locations to two key centers with preserve requires for sites greater than 16 acres. The master plans consultants recommended that two industrial employment centers be added to the tier. However, the board disagreed, and today there are no policies establishing guidance for industrial locations or uses. Staff recognizes that their heavier-style ag business use is located in the Agricultural Reserve. However, the industrial future land use was not anticipated to be added within the tier. There is no policy guidance, and the designation allows intense industrial uses that are not appropriate in the tier, particularly west of State Road 7. Board held a workshop on October 26 and November 3 for the Agricultural Reserve Tier. As a follow-up to the workshop, later on today, staff will present a text initiation item for the board's consideration regarding a new light industrial future land use in the tier. However, this application is proceeding ahead of those amendments. The proposed conditions, the amendment includes the conditions of approval adopted as part of the Sunflower Amendment that helps mitigate staff concerns. The first condition of approval proposes to limit uses on the site to essentially light industrial uses. A second condition proposes to limit commercial uses on the site. Due to the commercial cap being reached, site does not meet location criteria for commercial, and the condition is consistent with BCC transmittal action and applicant intent. During the public notification process, the Planning Division mailed out notices to property owners within 500 feet and interested parties. Staff held informational meeting on September 21, 2021. No members of the public attended. The board did receive correspondence from the Alliance of Delray in support, and 1,000 Friends of Florida, and Sierra Club Locks Statue Group in denial of the amendment at the transmittal hearing in November. Staff is recommending denial of this amendment. Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions in a nine-to-four vote. The Board of County Commissioners transmitted the amendment in a five-to-one vote, and the motion is to adopt the ordinance as recommended by staff. This was my presentation, sorry.
Is the recommendation to deny based upon timing, or?
Right now, we don't have any policies in the comprehensive plan directing guidance on industrial land in the ag reserve. We do have that as part of the initiation at the end of this, but this was in anticipation of those text changes. So, the conditions do limit it to light industrial and some of the other criteria that we're also going to be presenting in the future with the industrial text amendment.
But you're still recommending denial?
Correct, because there are no policies right now.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Okay, it's time for public comment. As I said, we have about ten cards here. That means it's going to be about a half hour, so feel free to either say, "I agree with the previous speaker," or "I don't," or you don't have to take all three of your minutes. Commissioner Kerner, would you please call our first speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. On Agenda Item 3C1, our first speaker will be Arlene, I apologize, Beray?
Uh, Berry.
Berry?
Yes.
And then following Ms. Berry, we'll have Mr. Drew Martin.
Okay. I wanted to start out with a quote from St. Thomas Aquinas. What seems small, like a small error in the beginning, turns out to be a big one in the end. And I think that this seems like it's only seven acres, or 6.9, and, but it's opening up Pandora's Box of possibilities of what could happen in the ag reserve, which we want to preserve. And the environmental impact would be great, and what going west of SR7 sets a precedent which is really bad. I want to point out also that the Audubon Society has noted that we have a list of common species of birds that may be going extinct, including the robin. So, and they associate that with, or they are concerned with, the continuous development of various parcels of land, because these robins need the trees and the open space to nest, and they go back to these places every year. So, that's one example of a species that's endangered. We have a biodiversity crisis, and we just need more space. So, we don't want to make a precedent which is, which opens the door for a lot more development. We want to keep our ag reserve. We agree with the staff. Keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mr. Martin?
Drew Martin, I'm here on behalf of the Locks Statue Group of the Sierra Club. We support staff's recommendation for denial, and did you want to reset my clock?
You could have had all the time you wanted.
I know you got tired of hearing from me, but that's very kind of you, Commissioner. You know, we've tried to establish some criteria, and I think what staff is saying to you, you know, they haven't had their chance to do their due diligence. And the whole problem is, it seems like everything on the agenda today is going to be something that people are trying to rush through, that they haven't really done the adequate planning. They don't have a category yet for landscaping services to park their trucks, and, you know, we would prefer it not to be on the west side of State Road 7. We had hoped that that would be kind of a line in the sand, everything to the west of that. I know, you know, you've made some exceptions, but that's our greatest concern. I'd like to see Palm Beach County begin to change how they do landscaping. One of the reasons they need so much landscaping is because people overwater. I was on the Palm Beach County Shoreland Water Conservation District, and, you know, if people would use less water, they wouldn't need to be, have landscaping services out there on a regular basis. People used more native landscaping. Now, we know that the current owner doesn't want to keep that land. We think that there might be potential ways to use it. We understand the current owner can't use it for agriculture. We accept that, but we do think that someone else might be able to do something appropriate with it. The other thing about parking landscaping vehicles is it's very unsightly. So, I think staff needs to come up with some, we need to create a new criteria, not call it industrial use, because it's really not industrial to park a vehicle out there. We need to come up with ways so that it doesn't look unsightly, and then there needs to be certain limits. So, I think at the very least, you should deny this today, let staff do their due diligence, and let it come back. But I really think that there's no reason to be in a rush, that another year or six months isn't going to make that much difference, and it will definitely make a difference if you do it properly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker, no pun intended, is Tom Gustafson, but he doesn't want to actually speak unless there are any questions, and he states, "I only wish to speak if there are any questions or concerns. I spoke at the last meeting, and my thoughts on the matter are the same." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I guess you're not going to speak. Oh, I think he's changed his mind. No? Okay.
All righty. Very good. So, we'll now go to Lois Sewell. And then following Lois will be Andrew Sewell.
Hi, make it short. Thank you. Thank you for listening to everything that we have talked to you about the property. I know we're really small, and Andy and I are one of the long-term landowners in the ag reserve. We appreciate the time, and I know it's very expensive to have all these meetings, so one of the Commissioners had asked us about the ag reserve and how large it was and all that, and I just want to reiterate that the ag reserve is 22,000 acres, and there's approximately 9,700 residential units in the reserve. And there's already 13,000 acres that have been preserved, and we're only left with 1,200 that needs to be entitled. Mine go up 9.75. Anyway, I feel that the proposal that we have made on our property really solves a problem and does not create one. There's a lot of landscapers that have, you know, need to leave where they are. Andy and I ran a landscape company there for 20-something years, and we never had a problem. The property's beautiful. It was always beautiful when we ran it as a landscape company. The exterior is beautifully landscaped. That never changed. I feel, this is personal, that the staff has no other option but to suggest to you guys, "No," because it's just not in the amendments, but it will be. And I know that, I don't know anything, but anyway, we went in because Sunflower is exactly like us. I think we're just a drop smaller than they are, and you all pass them, and we're staying in line with what we believe Commission wants, the county wants, and we look forward to your support. So, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Lois.
Our next speaker will be Andrew Sewell. I think it says he does not wish to speak only if there are questions.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for your time today. I just wanted to say that we really do want your support in approving the adoption, and that staff really had no other choice but to deny. We are a carbon copy of Sunflower, which was approved, and last time when we were here, somebody said, "Well, we hope it stays in Agriculture Services," and that's what we're doing. So, we're doing what the board asked us to do. So, therefore, we really want to get your support and approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Our next speaker is Lynn Gustafson, who only wishes to speak if there are any questions or concerns, and supports the item. Then, we have Ms. Linda Smith, and then Barry Silver.
Good morning. Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. I'd like to vote my, offer my support to the staff's denial. In my opinion, the light industrial use designation in the ag reserve will create another, unfortunately, another special case. We've removed the consideration of environmental impacts and sensitive lands that may surround the areas, maybe not this particular property, but light industrial in general. As pointed out by staff, due to the goal of the tier to preserve agriculture and sensitivity of the water resources west of the tier, to ensure that the additional uses are intended to serve the local area and to ensure that decisions are not made in a piecemeal fashion, the entire corridor needs to be considered, and I agree with that. The appropriate resolution for this issue is not to allow industrial light designations in the ag reserve despite a conditional overlay zone, but rather to take the time and consideration of resolving a more overreaching issue of the appropriate location of a landscape service operation while maintaining a review of proposals by the Commission and with public permission. a review of proposals by the commission and with public participation. I also want to clarify, if I have time, some comments I've made in the past regarding the request to preserve the ag reserve. My intent to preserve the, is to preserve the comprehensive plan. I appreciate the county did buy property with the bond money. They are preserving that. I believe it is being leased to farmers, which is great. A unique condition where there's actually some income coming in. And I believe that as this is reduced and reduced and reduced, if you don't protect the comprehensive plan, the people that are leasing that property will find it less desirable, and they may leave. And then we'll lose that income and what is the plan for fallow land? You know, farmers have to turn on their tractors at 6 o'clock in the morning. They have to, you know, make hay while the sun shines, pick the vegetables, whatever. During cold snaps, I mean, they were talking about running helicopters to keep the frost away. By the time we get down to those pieces of property that the county owns and is protecting, I could imagine that running a helicopter all night might be a little problematic. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Following Barry Silver, we have Laura Levine.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to comment on the opening prayer as well as this item. As a rabbi, I'm always glad to hear wonderful principles that were expressed eloquently about doing the right thing and seeking justice. But I would suggest that the county commission not refer to a personal God. I don't think it's appropriate. It's a violation of church-state separation. And it makes anyone who doesn't appreciate or believe in that feel like they're alienated or not part of these proceedings. And I kind of like the quote by Einstein. He said he's a deeply religious non-believer. There are many of us who believe in divine principles but don't believe in a personal God. I wouldn't reference anything about His holy name, His grace for us, or anything else. However, whether you believe in a personal God, or that is a supernatural, or whether you believe that the natural is super, this agricultural reserve is precious. It's miraculous, and it does something incredible. It's growing food out of the earth. And every time this commission votes to destroy some of that land and put up houses, you're destroying nature, and you're working against the natural system, and you're destroying our planet and our children's future. I would never do that. You must draw a line in the sand. There should be no new development anywhere in the ag reserve, and there should be no industrial use. Ag reserve means reserve for agriculture. People spent $150 million at the behest of the county to preserve it. And now slowly, gradually, it's being destroyed. And every time you compromise, you compromise the integrity of your own office, and you compromise our children's future. So I urge you to never, ever go against the Sierra Club. They speak for the planet. They speak for me. They speak for the earth. They speak for future generations. I would never go against them because they know what they're doing. They're well-versed in it. I wouldn't allow this exception. Seems like a minor exception. I would not allow it. And I thank you very much. I know that there's some on the county commissioner who are doing the right thing. I urge you to continue to do it. And if you don't, the voters will take action to make sure that people are elected who will actually care about us and our planet and our children's future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative Silver. Commissioner Sacks would like to either speak to you or speak to the issue.
Come on back up, Rabbi. I have so much respect for you for, as a former state representative, what you did with regard to prayers in the Florida Legislature. If folks don't know, it was Rabbi Silver who was able to pass a law that we could not pray before starting a legislative session, either in the House or in the Senate. So our prayers preceded the initiation of a session. And I always think that, and as someone who made a prayer today, and it was done with the concurrence, of course, legal staff, that we certainly need God today. And God may takes many forms. You and I have discussed this. But especially in any type of legislative or policymaking bodies, we certainly need God in our presence. So I thank you for your remarks. I respectfully disagree when it comes to not bringing God into whatever that shape or form may be, nature, maybe supernatural. But I think it's very important to bring God in whatever proceedings. And I know that you have many speeches and events that you do, and you always bring God into those events as well. I respect your opinion. I respectfully disagree when it comes to bringing God into our session. And I look forward to continuing this dialogue with you as we go forward in our
I'd like to continue it right now for 15 seconds. Personal God, I've never referenced, nor will I. And in the name of God, the biblical God, who is said and claimed to have allowed human beings to be the people who the earth was created for, the earth has been destroyed in the name of that God. You keep praying to that God, and there will be nothing left. Because that God, according to the Torah and the Bible, is saying that the earth was put here for us. That's a lie. I reject it. I repudiate it. And if you keep praying to that God, there'll be nothing left of this planet.
Representative, thank you.
For natural processes, not supernatural, who create the world for us. That's a lie.
Representative, your time has expired.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker is Laura Levine. And then the last speaker will be Mr. Jim Knight. And if I missed anyone's card, please notify a member of county staff.
Hi, good morning. This is such an honor. I've never been in a situation like this. I can't talk politics. I've been a teacher in the state, born here. And I come dressed as a farmer. I could sing you folk songs, but I won't. Anyway, I brought you some homegrown. Would you like them? I'll leave them for you, okay? Anyway, I moved up here from Miami, where I was born, because I love the parks. I love walking out. I can't tell you what I do. It's not illegal, but I'm out every day, pandemic, nothing bothers me. I'm out in the garbage. I'm at the beach. I'm, and you know, when I first drove Lyons Road, I'm like, wow, this is amazing. So please, whatever you can do and whatever you're doing to preserve it, I appreciate it. And where should I leave these?
The clerk will take those produce, and I'm sure we'll enjoy them. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. This is actually good planning practices, where it would be moving a landscape service, which we had long videos over, the cars and trucks coming in and out of Heritage Farms, and moving it out onto a six-lane highway, 441. Currently, there's nursery and wholesale on the property right now, so forth. And this will enable a business to come out of Heritage Farms, similar to what Top Cut is in the process of doing, moving out, and similar to what Sunflower did. This is just straight-out good planning practices, and I greatly appreciate your support for this. I am the broker, by the way, for this piece of property. But it's good planning practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Is that all the cards?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. And Commissioner Kerner, you were recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the members of the public that spoke on this item. You know, I was, I think, the lone vote against the transmittal of this application. And it passed overwhelmingly, I think five, five or six to one. And I had expressed some concerns about what the use may be on that property. And some of the, some of the uses that were discussed, I took great exception to. But the applicants and the owners were kind enough to take my thoughts and comments into consideration. They didn't have to, but they certainly have made an effort. And I think the application, application represents that effort in that they are confining it to certain uses that I think are appropriate. So I'm very much thankful that you took the time to speak with me and address my concerns. The agents were great, Jennifer and Lauren. And you didn't have to do that. So I'm going to make a motion to, a motion to adopt.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt on the table. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. We'll continue our comments. Commissioner McKinley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mayor Weinroth. And Commissioner Kerner, thank you for your thoughtful comments on that as well. I'm going to support this item today. And I'm grateful that we're continuing to find solutions for the Heritage Farms issue as well. And this is a step in the right direction. I just would address one thing. I do not believe or support an unfettered allegiances to any particular organization. I don't support my own political party platform 100%. Born and raised Catholic, I don't support their teachings 100%. I know you might find this surprising. I did not support my mother's positions 100% of the time. I think it's healthy. I've got a good relationship with the Sierra Club. We have not seen eye to eye on everything, but we had a very healthy conversation this week on an item that I think we have found common ground on in terms of single-use plastics. They do a lot of wonderful work. They're wonderful advocates, but it doesn't mean we have to agree 100% of the time. So just always appreciate a healthy conversation and look forward to supporting this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. You didn't mention your daughters. They always agree with you, I'm assuming.
Oh, heck, no.
Okay, Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I'm not going to mess with anybody's mother when it comes to issues like this. But since this is my district, and I think that in answer to those who may think that this is not part of what promotes the ag reserve, I think it is. I think this particular business does promote and protect the ag business in the reserve. And I know I've visited Heritage Farms. I saw the damage that was done to mixing landscapers in with residential. And it was, it was bad. So I am pleased to see that we are moving forward with, with businesses in the ag reserve, those light industrial, that will promote and protect the business of the ag reserve and the residents who live there. And I also want to commend the owners of Las Farms and their family for being respectful and bringing forth their issues. So I look forward to supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. And I'll pipe in here and say, if not here, where? We've been talking about Heritage Farms, cleaning out that problem. Mrs. Burns and her neighbors brought that to our attention, and certainly it was not an appropriate use in that neighborhood. I think right there on State Road seven is a perfect place for this use. And I thank the applicants for working with this, with us, with Commissioner Kerner. And I think it looks like it's going to be unanimous, but maybe I'm wrong. We'll see. I'll call the vote. Didn't we have a second already? Oh, yeah, we're way beyond there, Commissioner. All in favor, all opposed? Show it as a 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, that brings us to public hearing on Amendment Round 22A2, Item 4A1.
Yes, this is Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage Fearing Number Two in Seneca Number Two. This is a three-part request. We'll have the agent and then followed up by the county staff.
Mr. Brophy, how are you today?
Good morning. Very well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Vice Mayor and Commissioners. I have the suspicion everyone would like me to be brief in this presentation as much as I can. I will do my best, given the circumstances, so. Again, before you, Atlantic Commercial. This is, this is a part of a development that's actually been occurring since really 2014. And this is where the master plan of the ag reserve has indicated that they would like to see the commercial zone to be, which is at Atlantic and Lyons. And this is an extension of both Shop Delray and Plaza Delray to commercial developments to the west. And the application before you is to modify the land use from AGR to commercial low with an underlying AGR, and also limit the square footage of the Fearing and Seneca approvals to a certain cap of square footage. I will mention staff does recommend approval with conditions of approval, modified conditions of approval, since the Planning Commission, which we agree with. Planning Commission also voted in support of this application. Again, you can see the applicant, the project is in the yellow there, approximately 10 acres, located near the intersection of Lyons and Atlantic, adjacent to kind of that, again, that commercial node with the Delray marketplace on the, on the northwest side. In the application request, actually currently on the Fearing and Seneca site, we have approximately 43,000 and about 39,000 of a square, approved commercial square footage that could be developed. Those projects did not develop at their capacity. And so the request before you is, again, to limit those square footage on those two approvals, and then transfer the unused square footage to the neighboring parcel here. This is currently part of a preserve area. This 10 acres is a preserve area for the Sussman PUD. I'll talk in just a couple slides here about how we're going to offset those preserve areas. So the plan is, and we do have a concurrent zoning application to submit for retail, car wash, and self-storage. Again, will be limited to the square footage to just over 13,000 square feet. Of that transferred square footage from the two other projects. We also are going to limit the square footage of the storage to 100,000 square feet. Originally, it was set, the conditions of approval, close to 200,000 square feet. That was modified based on the site plan. The 200,000 feet came from the FAR that would have been allowed by the land use, but we're cutting that in half based on the submitted site plan. One of the important features is we will have cross-access to commercial to the west, and I'll get into that in just one minute. And we have been working with both the Alliance of Delray, and more importantly, Delray Lakes Estates, in regards to the buffering along our eastern property line, as well as the fact that we are going to be limiting the entirety of the development to one-story product to be compatible with them. Again, you can see outlined in red is the current preserve area. And our request would be for the land use change and rezoning to occur on that 10 acres. And what we would do is, in lieu of the 10 acres of the preserve on that parcel, is we would put preserve on two existing parcels that are currently in bona fide ag uses elsewhere in the ag reserve. So we would offset the Sussman PUD 10-acre preserve. And just to give you some historical knowledge of the property, so this was the former airstrip for crop dusting for the farms in the area here. And again, we're not taking the entirety of that, of that airstrip is about 20 acres total. We're taking about half of that. And so it was utilized, again, for the crop dusting and storage of chemicals, of those chemicals on the site. The southern 10 acres were the most heavily impacted from a contamination standpoint because of those practices. The DEP has spent over the last several years about $5 million cleaning up that contamination because of some of the leaching that has occurred from, from that southern 10 acres. Once that, that $5 million was spent, though, it, they essentially ran out of funds in order to continue the remediation of the northern 10 acres. So the, the current owner and applicant has been working with DEP on a remediation plan for the acreage that we're talking about today, and actually working as far as to have it designated as a, as a brownfield site. And that, that is a process that is currently underway. Again, we, there's a remediation plan to add approximately two feet of fill and capping certain areas under the driveways and the buildings in order to, to cap that contamination. Access was another important piece, especially in the eyes of the Alliance of Delray. We know that Atlantic and Lyons is a busy intersection. Currently, the access to this property is from any of the eastbound, or, I'm sorry, traffic coming from the east has to make a U-turn at that intersection in order to gain access to the current Plaza Delray and Shop Delray. And the plan by adding this parcel, and it's the parcel located in orange here, is to utilize is to utilize the existing left-in, so it will avoid those trips having to utilize the, the U-turn movement at, at the intersection. And we will have several cross-access points between all three projects, so there will be free-flow traffic between Lyons and Atlantic without impacting the, the intersection. Staff assessment, the subject site meets the commercial location requirements for the ag reserve tier, and we fall within the commercial cap. And the site is adjacent to the west to existing commercial uses, and we are compatible with surrounding land uses. They recommend support with conditions. We do meet the policies of the comp plan as listed in the staff report. We do have concurrent zoning requests, again, to go to the MUPD zoning district, as well as the Class A conditional uses. And again, just in summary, we are not increasing the commercial cap in the ag reserve with the application. We are not asking for any text amendment with the comp plan. We are locating the non-residential uses as identified on the ag reserve master plan, and we're alleviating those U-turn movements at Atlantic and Lyons. From a zoning perspective, we will continue to work with the Alliance of Delray and Delray Lakes Estates, which has asked us to meet with them once we have DRO approval of, of the site plan. And again, we are continuing to work with DEP on the, on the mitigation of that historical contamination, and will be able to, to utilize those two other pieces in bona fide ag currently as, as the preserve area parcel, preserve area parcels, that was tough, for the Sussman PUD. Again, staff recommends approval. We do have conditions of approval, which we are in agreement with, including the cap of the self-storage square footage. With that, I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Commissioner Sacks, you are recognized.
Thank you, Sir Brophy. And we had this discussion about that one storage for the, one story, for the, for the storage unit. I appreciate that. Now, when you talk about Atlantic and Lyons and the connector roads, have you submitted those plans to our staff so that we know who's going to pay for those roads? And how that is going to work within the widening of Lyons Road and the fact that DOT is working on Atlantic Avenue? How is that proceeding?
So we, we've submitted our, our site plans to staff that show the cross-access points between all three projects, which is our responsibility. We have submitted for access point approval from DOT, which we have approval from. Also, with the expansion of Atlantic, that left-in will remain, and we have agreements from DOT that that will happen.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Steph?
Yes, that'll be Scout Serino to present for the county staff.
Thank you.
Scott Serino, again with the Planning Division. Scott Serino with the Planning Division. This is a multi-part amendment request in the agricultural reserve tier for three parcels located at the southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue Lyons Road. The Fearing site shown in pink and the Seneca site shown in yellow are two sites that have received commercial low future land use in 2016 and 2017. Sites are currently built with commercial uses and have unutilized square footage remaining. The first part of the request is to reduce the allowable square footage on the site through conditions of approval. This will allow the unutilized square footage to be signed to Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage, which is requesting commercial without increasing the commercial cap. The commercial cap is unique to the agricultural reserve tier and was established to ensure that commercial does not exceed local demand and thereby serve as a draw from the outside of the tier. By 2019, the current cap of 1,150,000 square feet has largely been reached with approvals within the tier. In 2020, revisions to commercial policies in the tier were adopted along with the West Boynton Center Amendment to exempt self-storage from the commercial cap and to allow commercially designated sites that meet major intersection criteria in the ULDC to achieve higher floor area ratio. The Atlantic Commercial site, shown in purple, is 9.89 acres, and the applicant is requesting an amendment from agricultural reserve to commercial low. The site is currently a preserve area for the Sussman PUD. The associated zoning application is proposing to relocate the preserve area and rezone to multiple-use plan development. The most recent site plan shows the applicant intends to develop 10,212 square feet of retail, 3,119 square feet of car wash, and almost 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses. The subject sites are located at a commercial node with the Delray marketplace to the west, northwest corner, and two pre-existing commercial sites at the northeast corner. To the east is the Delray Lakes Estates. And to the south is various agriculture uses within the, within agricultural reserve future land use. Staff assessment is that the amendment is located adjacent to an existing commercial node and is consistent with the policies in the comprehensive plan related to commercial location within the agricultural reserve tier. Specifically, the site is within a quarter-mile of one of the two commercial mixed-use centers, which encourages the clustering of non-residential uses in the agricultural reserve tier. In addition, the amendment falls within the commercial cap established in the tier due to the release of square footage from the Seneca and Fearing sites. During the public notification process, the Planning Division mailed notices to property owners within 500 feet and interested parties. Staff held informational meeting on January 4, 2022, and no members of the public attended. As of this morning, no correspondence has been received. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of this amendment. Planning, Planning Commission recommended approval with modifications in a 13-1 vote, modifying Condition 1 to maximum 100,000 square feet of self-storage uses. Applicant agreed to the condition modification that was included in the add delete. The conditions include for the Atlantic Commercial site to limit the maximum square footage of the commercial and self-storage uses, require vehicular connectivity to the west, and require adoption concurrent with the zoning application. And for the Seneca and Fearing sites, the conditions will reduce the maximum square footage allowed on the site. And this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serino. I don't see anybody clamoring for clarification. We have a number of comment cards, so we will go through them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker will be Mr. Jim Knight, followed by Ms. Lorna Wallick, or Walla. All right. Well done. Lorna Wallick. And then following Ms. Lorna Wallick will be Ms. Linda Smith.
Okay. Good morning. I live in the preserve. I live at Valencia Sound, which is 2.5 miles north of Atlantic Avenue, right there. And I can tell you that the traffic is a mess. We get backed up Lyons Road all the way to me at Valencia Sound, 2.5 miles north. If you want to go south, I have to go all the way to Boynton Beach Boulevard, go, you know, either east or west to try to get south. There's no way out. Putting anything in is a disaster and will just be a mess. And living out there, since the other development has occurred, like across from Delray Marketplace, the traffic has gotten worse. To try to go down Atlantic to 441 is another mess. We have, the roads just can't accommodate any of this. So to even think about planning more construction of any sort, which I'm not against, okay? I'm really not against it, is, is ridiculous when we can't even get around now. So I don't understand the plans. We have Flavor Pick Road, which has not been expanded yet, which would help us. We could get at least a 441, just a block north, not even a block north of where I live at Valencia Sound. There's no plans for that. They're going to put a firehouse in there this year. There's going to be a temporary firehouse right there at Valencia Sound on the, on a piece of property there that's supposed to be responding to things. How are they going to get around? This is not well thought out. And I really implore you to please look into this further without giving carte blanche. There is a new Valencia that's going on Lyons Road north. It's now being called Valencia Grand. And they are going to be opening in March to selling more property. That's going to be more traffic, more taking away of our agricultural land, which we need. We need food. We need clean water, right? We already have a flooding problem in Valencia Sound because we're doing away with the lands, and there's nothing to hold the water, to absorb it. This is just becoming more and more of a disaster, and I'm, I'm quite upset. And I really hope you look into this, please.
Thank you, Ms. Wallick. We do appreciate your comments. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Yeah, thank you. In my agenda review, I did ask staff from our engineering division to talk about the timing of those road improvements because having been there about 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock on a Friday evening, it does get pretty congested. And I know, as you said, that the Flavor Pick Road Extension Project is due to start sometime this year. So that was really good news. And I had asked them to time the Lyons Road improvements to see if we could coordinate that a little bit better with the Florida Department of Transportation, which is responsible for the Atlantic Avenue extensions. And Mayor, since you are the chairman of the Transportation Planning Agency, maybe this is something that we could raise at our next meeting.
It would certainly be appropriate, and given the funding coming from our federal friends, that may be something we can accelerate.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, you are recognized.
And following Ms. Smith, we'll have Mr. Drew Martin.
Linda Smith, still from Jupiter, Florida. Still, good morning. I'm going to tell a very brief, personal story. In December, I was with my mother for 10 days. Hope Hospice calls this process transitioning. It took over a week, but on January 4, she died. I know what dead looks like. But I'm going to continue, and I'm going to read something in regards to please fully implement Objective 1.5. Objective 1.5 of the future land use element of the Palm Beach County Comprehensive Plan created the agricultural reserve tier to govern land use development in the unique farmland and wetlands under the guiding objectives of the master plan and states in pertinent part, Palm Beach County shall preserve the unique, unique farmland and wetlands in order to preserve and enhance agricultural activity, environmental and water resources, and open space within the agricultural reserve tier. This shall be accomplished by limiting uses of agriculture and conservation with residential development restricted to low densities and non-residential development limited to uses serving the needs of the farmers and the residents of the tier. The agricultural reserve tier shall be preserved primarily for agricultural use, reflecting the unique farmlands and wetlands within it. My mother was a longtime Audubon and Sierra Club member, and she would approve this message. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Martin?
Drew Martin, still representing the Locksatchy Group of the Sierra Club. I want to address the concerns that were brought up by the lady here, who made an excellent presentation. And instead of people saying, wow, maybe we shouldn't develop, they said, wow, we should just build more roads. I mean, you know, like that's somehow going to solve the problem when you add more and more traffic. And I read the biography of Robert Moses, and I don't know if anybody here knows who that was, but he was a, basically the premier road builder for the state of New York. He was a volunteer who managed to become head of every commission that had to do with roads. He was so powerful that it wasn't until Nelson Rockefeller became governor, and he threatened to resign, and he accepted his resignation. He was more powerful than the governor. But Robert Moses said one thing. The more roads you build, the more traffic you create. He said that building roads does not stop traffic because you build roads, and then people think, oh, I can drive even more. There's more roads. So what we're seeing here, which I thought this lady very well stated, was we're seeing a total lack of planning. That's really what's going on here. You had a plan, and every time somebody shows up, you just ignore the plan. Sometimes staff says, recommends denial. Sometimes staff recommends approval. It doesn't really matter because we pretty much know everything that comes up is going to get approved. And then the excuse will be like it was for the last item, and they'll say, well, you approved Sunflower, so you should approve us. And that's going to be, you're going to approve this, and then somebody else is going to come in and say, well, you approved them. You should approve us. And so what is this for? Now, the whole idea of planning was to put commercial in there that was needed. Now, do you really need self-storage? I wish it was never invented. Self-storage is killing me because I got stuff in self-storage, and I would have got rid of it, but I thought, oh, I'll put it in self-storage. I had one self-storage in another state for like 12, 15 years. I finally had to go get it. So are you really doing somebody a favor by building self-storage? No. Do they need a car wash? Does it need to be in the ag reserve? No. If somebody really wants to wash their car, they could probably drive outside the ag reserve. So what you're really doing is taking the commercial cap and you're using it for some, uses that aren't needed. And then pretty soon, somebody's going to come along and say, well, you need to expand the commercial cap. So when you build commercial, it ought to be something that's really needed, not self-storage, not a car wash, something that somebody's really going to need. I'm sure you won't listen to me, but I appreciate your time.
Mr. Martin, we always listen to you, and we appreciate you making your comments.
Our next speaker will be Barry, oh, sorry, Barry Silver. And then the final speaker will be Laura Levine.
Representative, you are recognized for three minutes. I'd urge you to stay focused on the subject at hand.
I'll do my best. Subject at hand is the destruction of the planet. And every time you pass one of these amendments, you're sealing the future of our children because you're adding to climate change. That's the matter at hand. It was about 15 or 20 years ago that I was involved in litigation with a county. They wanted to extend Lyons Road up beyond Atlantic Avenue. They wanted to put up a development there called Meisner Country Club. And I argued that that's going to pave the way literally towards more development and the destruction of the ag reserve. You know what the county commission said? Oh, no, no, no. We just want this one project. That's all that's going to happen off that road. It's just going to go one project. And I told the administrative law judge I was a lie. You weren't there then, but you're here now, and you're following in their footsteps. And you're contributing to the lie that was told then. A car wash in the ag reserve? That is simply outrageous. We don't need self-storage, as Drew said. We need water storage. One of the commissioners said that she's free to disagree with the Sierra Club. You can, but you'll be disagreeing with people who have devoted their lives to protecting this planet and our children's future. You can disagree with your mother, but you do not want to go against Mother Earth, and you do not want to mess with Mother Nature, and you do not want to destroy what took millions of years to develop and to pave it over. Because when you mess with Mother Earth, we now know the consequences. I urge you not to destroy this planet. And I'm going to finish up with a little song from my tradition that we sing on Hanukkah, which represents a people fighting to preserve their way of life. We have a little farmland. It's made out of the earth, where nature's had the upper hand since long before our birth. Oh, Palm Beach County Commission, our lies you should enhance. So join us in this mission to give our earth a chance. We have some open space. It's called the ag reserve. A very nice place. Our county's last preserve. Oh, Palm Beach County Commission, we mean no disrespect, but when developers seek submission, you need not genuflect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. It's time for us to have some discussion. Who'd like to start? Who'd like to make a motion? We can have a motion transmit, or we can have some further. Yes, Commissioner Sacks.
This has been one of the most entertaining discussions we've had so far. Thank you, Rabbi, for that. I always appreciate your song and the meaning behind it. I had initially said that I would be in favor of this project, and I apologize, Mr. Brophy. But since that time, we have a possibility of adding 1,250 housing units on 441 in the ag reserve. And I don't know what the vote is going to be on that. If the vote is from this county commission to approve changing a conservation area to residential PUD, then we need to change, and we need to take a look at, certainly, what's going to happen with the rest of the area on Atlantic Avenue, Lyons Road, and 441. Because as we know, the master plan is to have businesses that will support and promote agriculture, as well as for the residents who live there. I don't know who lives there right now. I don't know who... I know who lives there now, because I've been hearing from them, but I don't know who will be living there. So before I can approve or disapprove, really, a project, Mr. Brophy, and I apologize, I need to know what's going to happen in our next, in our next area that we're going to vote on as a county commission. So not knowing where we're going to go, I cannot really have a plan for what can go there today. So as was noted before by previous speakers, this is, we need a plan. And until we have that plan, I really can't take a vote of approval on what you want to do at this time. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the perspective of Commissioner Sacks on this, and it's a point well taken. I'm wondering if it would be in the benefit of all involved to have a motion to postpone this to the end of the agenda?
Would that be something that...
That's up to the board.
All right. As long as it's in order, there is a motion to reorder the agenda and postpone this to come after 5A1. Do I have a second to that motion?
Do you have a second, right here?
We have a second by Commissioner Sacks. So we have a motion before us to defer consideration on this item. Still holding it today, but that we would move it, can we say after 5A1?
That would be my motion.
All right. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that it's appropriate to handle this matter this way. I'm going to offer a substitute motion to transmit the Atlantic Commercial and Self-Storage Fearing 2 and Seneca 2 amendments.
I have a motion to transmit. Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Marino. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, unfortunately, then have to vote against this based upon the comments of the district commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner. Commissioner McKinley, did you want to be recognized again?
Nope.
Okay. Vice Mayor Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I have a question to staff, because there are a number of things that were brought up in public comment. Is what is being requested in keeping with the comprehensive plan for the area?
Staff took a look at the policies in the comprehensive plan. It is within the quarter mile of that intersection, and it is in accordance and consistent with the comprehensive plan.
And is, are the uses that are being requested, are those allowed in the plan as well?
The retail, the car wash, the self-storage, I don't know that that was initially anticipated as serving the farm workers, but the residents that are there now, that, you know, would reduce trips going outside of the ag reserve if they needed those services and retail in that area.
And in understanding the need for self-storage out there, I think years ago, when the first self-storage, the need arose, or the request for that use, was it, in fact, based on the need of the residents out there who had, I guess, they didn't anticipate that they couldn't keep anything in their garages, except their cars, and then that for people who were relocating out there to those homes and wanted to keep whatever personal possessions they had, they had to seek somewhere outside of their homes?
We don't base staff recommendations on market need. That is, of course, brought to us by the applicant, but we do base it on whether it's consistent with the statutes or not. There's not any other location other than northwest corner, north of Boynton Beach Boulevard within the ag reserve that has a self-storage use at this time. And, you know, there are very limited areas where that can happen in the ag reserve, so it's not that there's going to be a proliferation of that throughout the ag reserve.
Well, I guess my question, then, let me rephrase it. Was it testimony at the time that the HOAs would not allow people to use their garages for anything except for parking their cars, otherwise they'd be in violation of the HOAs? And then, which is why the, at least the neighbors came in support of the need for self-storage.
And I can't actually speak to that, because it's not based off of the comp plan. There may be zoning regulations or HOA regulations that require that, but it's not a comprehensive plan item.
Okay. Well, I get, then I'll just, I'll just say, it's my recollection that that's what, in fact, occurred and the need for it, and I see...
Yes. When the West Boynton Center text amendment came in, you're correct, there was some representations by the applicant at the time that some HOAs, you have restrictions on cars being parked outside of the garage, so that there was no storage space in the garage.
And then, and then I guess my last question on this matter is, are they meeting, are they meeting the guidelines for providing the proper level of preservation lands as required in the comp plan?
Yes, they are relocating to two sites and relocating the preservation to appropriate locations within the ag reserve.
And we don't, you don't have a, do we have a policy, per se, on fallow land versus, versus land in ag production, or...
No, the comp plan allows for open space, wetlands. It could be fallow land, fallow land being that type of land that's in transition period from open space to agricultural, from agricultural use to another agricultural use. But there's no real mitigation right now, or review of the land. We had taken a look at this particular property because it had some contamination, that it was one of those sites that was probably questionable as a preserve at the beginning, but there was no, we don't have criteria, really, shaying whether or not this fallow land or open space would be appropriate or not as a preserve, as long as there wasn't any construction on it, and it met the requirements of the comprehensive plan, it was not an issue. But the relocation of this, we find to be appropriate.
Okay. Thank you.
Ramsey, would you like to add your thoughts?
Yes, so a couple of comments that code enforcement runs into most of the time is, most people's garages, they're kind of small, they can't really fit a car in there comfortably, you can't open the doors comfortably, so it ends up getting filled with junk, well, not junk, but possessions. And then they start parking...
According to Mr. Martin, it's junk.
They park, start parking, blocking the sidewalks, and then they start parking on the street, and then we have a fire access, life safety issue with the fire department. So there is, we've seen a need for self-storage, just based upon, a lot of these developments try to maximize the amount of space, which kind of cuts into some of their parking, and they take it to the street, then it becomes a fire issue.
Thank you. Mr. Brophy, before I get to Commissioner Bernard, do you have any sort of thought on how far people usually drive to get to self-storage? Is this something, you know, within a mile, five miles?
I can tell you enough that our clients do know that there is a market for it, because as it was mentioned, yes, the one that was approved is up on Boynton Beach Boulevard and Acme Dairy, which is outside of what we would consider for this market, which is more the Delray. So, yeah, that's going to serve the canyons and the folks north of Boynton Beach Boulevard. But all these developments that have come online, you know, over the last few years, especially south of Atlantic, are going to be served by this market. So we're confident that it's a suitable location. And secondarily, this is not an adoption hearing, just to remind the board that this is a transmittal hearing. We will be back with the adoption, zoning, and site plan months from now.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this moment, I'm going to support the district commissioner Maria Sacks on not transmitting this item. I would support, you know, hearing it after the item that we're going to hear, but for right now, I'll not support it. Thank you.
Okay. I don't hear another substitute motion, so we're going to have the vote on the motion to transmit. Since it seems to look like a split vote, let's go ahead and have a roll call.
Commissioner Bernard?
Why am I first?
Because I said District 7 is number one today.
The answer, no.
Commissioner Kerner?
No.
Commissioner Marino?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
No.
Mayor Weinroth?
Yes. What was our vote? It failed, three to four, four to three? Okay. Now, is that any way that we could resurrect this for a...
Postponement, please.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to reconsider my vote, and how can, help me out, attorney? Can I somehow put this back on for after 5A1?
No.
Under, under Robert's rules, you need someone on the prevailing side.
Okay, so I was on the losing side on that. Anybody on the prevailing side want to make a motion?
So what's the motion? To bring it back? So I'd like to move to postpone this till after...
5A1.
So you need to reconsider the vote that you just had, and then you can move the new motion.
What do I have to do?
Move to reconsider.
Reconsider the... Mayor? Bob and I are looking at each other. I think we're doing this in two steps. First, you need to reconsider the motion not to transmit, correct? And then you want to move to reorder to hold it after 5A1. Correct, Bob? So I guess it's not reconsider, is it rescind the motion to not transmit?
All right, so...
And then move to postpone. Right.
Just help us through this, Mr. Banks.
I think your substitute motion failed, so you can go back to the original motion.
All right, so if you reconsider, and this fails, it already failed.
But the failure is the prevailing side.
Right.
Get me to where we want to go, Mr. Banks.
Commissioner Weiss was on the prevailing side. The motion failed.
Okay.
So he wants to reconsider, but not to approve it, but to reconsider, and then postpone the item until after the discussion regarding the swap.
That's my motion.
All right, so the motion is, and I'm looking for a second, to postpone and reconsider at after 5A1. Do I have a second? No second? Okay. The vote stands. It is defeated. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I think that this is an absolutely horrible public policy position to take by holding one applicant who's got staff approval, holding their feet to the fire based on how we handle a future conversation that isn't voting to... The item before us after this is not to vote to transmit, it's not a vote to approve, it's simply a vote to initiate on whether or not to even have a conversation. And we're blaming this applicant that is standing before us today and making it almost sound like, well, if the GL one goes through, sorry, buddy, we can't approve your project. And that is not appropriate, and I'm no lawyer, there are a lot of lawyers up here on this board, but I think that opens us up to a tremendous amount of litigation, and this is a bad precedent to set.
And I may agree with you, Commissioner McKinley, but a majority of our colleagues felt that this was a motion that they couldn't support, and so I'm going to allow some conversation...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I agree that I think the, any nexus between this application and what will be before you this afternoon, or this morning, there is no connection. We meet the policies of the comp plan, we have staff recommendation of approval, and we also have your planning commission recommendation of approval. In lieu of postponement to this afternoon, we would take a postponement to the next round in order to continue to work on the project.
All right, let's have more discussion. Commissioner Kerner, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate my colleague, Commissioner McKinley's comments, but this is, in fact, an act of legislative grace when we, when we provide an affirmative vote. That's the pure discretion of the board. A motion to postpone this and accommodate the applicant was made, and it was voted down, and I think you made the motion, a substitute motion. So it's very much in our realm and our authority to analyze the land use decisions that we make in the context of other land use decisions, particularly when they're before us on the same day. I didn't represent anyone on this board that I was going to vote no on this if the Indian Trails AGR initiation passed, but I'd like to be able to view it in the context of what that plan looks like, what the impacts would be, and that's within the discretion of the legislative body. So an opportunity was made to postpone this. The applicant didn't ask to have it postponed. That was my generous offer, and it was voted down. So unfortunately, there's nothing improper about what we just did. That's the role and duty of a legislative body to make these decisions.
Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
I am going to reserve comment. Thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Kerner, and I'd like to move on. I don't think that it's proper or professional to dwell on personal issues before our body. I'm not used to this in the legislative bodies that I have sat on. I'd like to move on. We've had a vote. We've had discussion before we took the vote. Mayor, you did an extraordinary job in making sure everybody was heard. We had many motions. The vote has been cast. Let's move on with the business of the county. Thank you, Mr. Brophy.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacks, Commissioner McKinley?
Yeah, I'm going to finish that up. The problem was, is that the context of the original motion was made, holding the feet to the fire dependent on a future motion, which is not appropriate, and it almost sounds a little bit illegal. Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we recess this board, allow our attorneys to see what our options are under Robert's Rules of Order, and take this up after our lunch break.
No.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
I support my, I support Commissioner McKinley's recommendation.
Given the hour, I think...
No, excuse me.
Commissioner Sacks, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. I am a lawyer. We have lawyers here. We have heard from the county lawyer. I say we move on. County lawyer has given his opinion. It is the opinion of the attorney for the county, based on county procedures and policies. It is 12:00. We have had discussion. Let's move on. This is, this is a professional body, and we have taken a vote, and we have had our county attorney give his opinion on it. Sir, let's move on.
Commissioner Sacks, your comments are noted, and as you said, it's 12:00 noon. I am going to call a recess. I am going to call a recess until 1:00.